Thank you for that automated update. All right, we'll now call the city council special meetings order for June 7th, 6:00 P.M. Please rise to the invocation and pledge allegiance.
Father, we thank you for this night, Lord, we thank you for allowing us to be here again, Lord. We just ask that your will be done in this meeting. Father, invite the Holy Spirit, please, to guide us tonight, Father. We just ask that your will be done, Lord. We ask you to protect all of our men and women from across this world, Lord. We ask that you would help us in this crazy time that we have going on with our country, with all turmoil, Lord. We just ask you to smooth everything out, Father. Give us wisdom, Lord, in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maybe see this. Madam clerk, we can get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Gray, here. Councilmember Johnson, here. Councilmember Sutherland, here. Deputy Mayor Bernard, here. Mayor Anderson, you have the call.
All right, we have one item, and as I understand it, we need to select the FAM Florida Airport Management Proposal before discussion in the public can happen. So is that correct, Jerry?
Yes.
Okay, so do we have a motion to that effect?
So.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any questions? See if you have questions or anything. Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray, yes. Councilmember Johnson, yes. Councilmember Sutherland, yes. Deputy Mayor Bernard, yes. Mayor Anderson, yes. Motion's asked in my name.
All right, we can just simply proceed forward and negotiate. Now we can publicly negotiate. Well, last we had in our private meeting, we had a number of recommendations that were then put forward to FAM. What I understand, FAM has an opportunity to respond to those recommendations and bullet points. And at this point, LOL, do you want to take us through, probably start at the top of what the biggest barricade is, and then we'll kind of work our way down from there?
Mayor, if I could, we have a couple of questions.
Okay.
For the FAM team that I think would clarify a couple of the issues that we identified.
All right, if you could try to speak up into that microphone, sure, for the record there and take the word.
You had mentioned you were talking about capital lease.
Yes, sir.
If you could expand on that a little bit and kind of help the council understand what you mean by capital lease approach, that would be helpful.
No problem. So, the capital lease, there's, I provided a decision treaty. There's gonna be four ways that the IRS and G A P look at this, and some of the parameters. And I've decided this off of Harvard, it's, you can, you can, there's many sources and supporting documentation. There's gonna be four ways the IRS looks at this or G A P, which. Okay, I just wanted it to my reference, yeah. And so, only one of the four have to be hit for it to be considered a capital lease. And so, two of them we definitely hit. The other two, if we ever did exercise a full privatization off, uh, option later on, then we would qualify for those as well, for the lease purchase. Given that we all know how long that process can take, up to 10 years, and it's very costly, I just want to focus on the bottom two. The lease term is greater than or equal to 75% of the estimated economic life of the leased asset at the beginning of the lease term. Or item number two, the present value of the lease payments at the inception of the lease is greater than or equal to 90% of the fair value of the leased asset. And so, given the, we still have to wait to see if the FAA will approve our 9.2 million to make sure that that is fair market value for, for the airport, assuming that they will, because that appraisal was done under USDAP standards, universal standard of appraisals. Then, that's gonna exceed the seventy, uh, the other thing I mentioned here too, sorry if I'm bouncing around, is the useful life. When we're talking about long-term leases, typically a commercial building or space has a 30-year useful life. So our overall lease is longer than that. And so, I'm not, I mean, assuming that they do the 9.2, then we'll call it like a both.
So, follow-up on that is, you mentioned in your updated term sheet about financing, that this was necessary to fulfill your financing obligations.
Contractual obligations, yes.
So, a question would be, do you anticipate pledging or any way mortgaging those assets?
Yes and no. So, when we look at the overall USDA loan from one of our tenants, they're gonna look at that as a capitalization of, of, to secure that loan guarantee.
So, clarify that.
So, clarify that is, whatever, whatever down payment we put, whether it's this or otherwise, and I wrote, write a check for 10 million, that opens up 40 million in private financing for infrastructure improvements.
Okay, so the question is, in any way would the cities existing airport or buildings that exist today, or would be added in the future, that the city would all be pledged towards?
Yes. They would have to. There's no way we can unlock private financing without some sort of security. No bank has been on that.
Jerry, any comments or view or day on that?
Yeah, I mean, I'm wondering how you're gonna mortgage municipal property in the state of Florida.
So, the, the way the banks is gonna look at that, and the way the USDA will look at it in the, in the underwriting, is when the asset amount of 9.2 million, that'll have to be reflected on our balance sheet. And so, they're gonna look at our balance sheet to ensure that, that, that project, whatever, whatever capital improvement project we have going on in time, is efficiently capitalized.
I know, but you can't have a mortgage on municipal property. You can't have mortgage on government property in Florida.
If we manage the asset, yes.
Yes, what?
Yes, we can mortgage it.
You can mortgage it if you manage city property?
Under the, on the way we got the D V F O Ms set up, yes, sir.
All right, well, I've never heard that before, and I, I do find that somewhat questionable because it's constitutionally, you can't mortgage government property. But if you're saying that because you have some control or anything like that, I'd like to see where that is, because it doesn't apply to leases, I know that, so.
Again, I'm just gonna go back to, I don't want to speak as if I'm some chief financial officer with 50 years of.
No, and I'm not asking it in that direction. I mean, you can, you can answer anytime you want, but I, but I just, you know, if you have somebody, you know, an attorney that can say why you're able to mortgage city property under the circumstances of.
So, I'm gonna, it goes back to the, I'm gonna go back to the USDA. They don't care whether I write out a check for 10 million or if we're capitalized through this process to unlock the funds of the O. It's not, and, and, and when that happens, 100% of the loan is guaranteed by the USDA. So if we, for whatever reason defaulted in the process, it's still secured.
I, I'm kind of confused, because you seem to be indicating that you are capitalized to the value of the property through the fact that you're entering into a long-term lease, yet you haven't put, I, I mean, it, on day one, you haven't put a single dollar into the project. And if, if you are indicating that that is something that is deemed to be security for your loan, I think the, the FAA is gonna have trouble with your being able to, to do this under a strict, strict lease instead of the privatization program. I, 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 I think both Jerry and I are having trouble understanding how you're complying with the legal requirements applicable to both municipal property and Jerry's part and, and the FAA requirements regarding a, a long-term lease compared to the privatization program under the, under the structure that you're, you're offering here.
All right, well, let me back up a second here. Even if we, first off, I don't want it, I'd like for everybody here not to speculate what the FAA would be unless they're here to represent themselves. But it's going to be under IRS code. It's gonna be G A P. So whether or not I ever put a mortgage on a property, that's the way we're gonna have to file our taxes anyways. So even if we never did put a mortgage on the property, that's how the federal government's gonna view that. I knew I should have brought the chapter and verse, but I can't provide that later, Jerry.
I think, in fairness to the city, that, that we're gonna be looking for your council to provide legal assurance in the form of opinion or something that, that gives us real assurance that, that's, that's consistent with the structure that you're outlining. And I understand that, you know, I can't speak for the FAA, but I have dealt with the FAA for many, many years. And so, I think I can at least give you an indication as to the issues that they're gonna be looking at with real care.
The issue related to who puts the promise, the day it's on the seat.
That's right.
So, and I think what they was saying, it was, it has to be a transaction to convert it to their books and their rules. And at this point, there isn't a transaction. There's no monetary accounting on this. You know, that is absurd, you know. If at the end of the term, you make an investment for that money, then that may be a different situation. Today, that doesn't exist. So, my hand is here. So, under the way these things work, that's gonna stay on their books until that value changes. Does that make sense? So, also it's, it's not, it can't be on two sets of books.
I get that, yeah. I'm not sure what answer, you know, you're wanting me to provide, if, if at the end of the days, I mean, our, the loan guarantee writers, the USDA requested a speaker as well. I hope we had that conversation. And, and he even spoke in public, he even here on Zoom saying that that transaction can be made and that can't, that won't.
USDA is, is a.
I understand, but they're the ones under the right.
I understand, I understand. And, and I tell the USDA too, they're looking for, looking for things that affect or affect the, you know, real. So, I think, so, but that's how you, do you share the, the, what's happening there? But that's really affecting on the title of it. Are you asking the city to hold it or to give it to the?
I'm asking, if we're gonna have full financial fiduciary rights of the airport management ownership, how that would affect it all or not? So, even last month, the term capital lease was even rewritten to, it's called finances. So, if we're, if we're obligated to pay 9.2 million, if that's the number over the life of the lease, they've now re-changed that term from capital lease to life. And that does have to be the point of sale. And so, I could pay. Yeah, and whatever is the term. Okay, so, let's say 9.2 million is the right figure, and that can go on to 187 million. Now, once that 187 has reached, whether we go to check the loan, day one, will we finance that out for 29 years? That's up to the city.
I am having a little trouble hearing JT. He's not speaking clearly into the microphone, but it sounded like he was saying it was up to the city whether or not to transfer title. Is, is that, did I hear that right?
Which is also, we've seen all on the. What I was saying, David, is just last month, they re, the federal government redefined what capital lease actually is, and now it's sort of finances. So, even if we made it over, uh, monthly, it's all in the, they own some, or whatever, that's up to the city to decide. And that is, that, but the new term, you know, the city, title never changes. But given the, given we qualify for the bottom due lender, or if we put a term in there that we put most aside on the right, we go through the full privatization process to determine this, you know, qualify for all four of, of the, the right guidelines for capital lease, or now.
I guess where I'm coming from, JT, is, is why don't we move on to some other questions? I, I think that the, i- i- if, if what you're saying is that the, that the format of the transaction would allow USDA to consider this to be an asset of, of FAM, that, that it could lend against, then we, we, why don't we move on to a couple of other questions? I, I, I think, you know, I've certainly seen situations where the similar structure is treated differently for different purposes by different agencies. So, let's, let's kind of go ahead to a couple of other things. So there are a couple of other pretty important questions that LOL had, had wanted to ask, ask you and your colleague.
LOL, if we can get you off of yelling. Yeah.
The, the update it provided is demand-driven effect, and you can kind of clarify what you mean by that.
So, no, no developer or investor would go based on spec, right? So there has to be insurance here before you can actually go over it.
Is there any insurance?
Outside of our entity, we have a lot of it.
I can hear it.
I'm saying, are there any commitments now that the city can go in?
Yes.
Do you stand on that?
Uh, I'm in the, in the, I'm in the emergency services, we're trying to work out with.
I'm sorry, maybe, I think I might have missed something in that. I've seen a lot of expressions with a lot of tension there, and I don't know what the, could you maybe repeat that? You asked, was there any, say it again?
Right, they indicated that it would be a demand-driven, but.
Okay.
Things, if it comes.
Right.
Okay, so my question is, is there anything now?
Right.
Would be part of this lease contract.
And JT, you respond, well, yes, of course. Avon Park, it's just a company, American and industrial. But keep in mind, the airport might have other teams.
Right.
Okay, and so if they come in and they want to build out, that's fine, but you have to, you have to look at this and, what demand-driven means is, we're not just gonna build it to build, especially because the, the payments are on us. So, whether it's us or a master industrial developer that does this nationwide, it's, it's very hard to build speculative at it, especially in this world.
Do you indicate on the time that you would expect the city to, what you may secure in? What, what form of support would you like?
Back out. With the, the, at the, the asset that we're all about. Yeah, no, there is some question, is originally that people profit, whether it be all. Uh, then we could, uh, the, the city manager or whoever the director, be the liaison to this, manage it. If, if there's a dollar mortgage, it has to be done in the asset and the, we have to come in and, but then that also, again, looks at a point of no applicable, you know. Again, go back to what comes back.
So, but, but my question is, if that can't be common, do what would it look like? Like that, and do you expect the, expect the USDA to land on?
No, they're suggesting the city not having a partnership first, rather than asking to, to, that's also why, whatever capital project we're.
I, I am a little concerned about the, the, the language in the cover letter that talks about unfettered control, et cetera. The, the, the fact is that the city under this structure will remain the airport sponsor and is on the hook under its grant assurances to the federal government. And what I'm, when I'm reading in your cover letter and the materials that you sent, is that you're looking for FAM to have the, basically the ability to make all decisions about the operation of the airport, including setting up the master plan and, and doing development. And is that, is that your position, or am I overstating you?
No, that's our position. Uh, you know, the FAA, even if they wanted us to give them a good master plan, it's already, currently enough to master plan. So, it doesn't mean in our short-term, long-range goal, we're already.
But we're gonna be, for a couple of more years, I think that master plan will have its 10-year term, where a new master plan will come about. So when that new master plan comes about, is that gonna be unfettered by you than anyone?
Well, what I have in the city, this is supposed to be a partnership. So, the city wants to have input on what that master plan is, that's fine. What we don't want to do is set up long-term contracts. What other would, whether, whether the restaurant on one down the street wants a, a cafe over there, and then we, we set up a plan for their success, and then that's, that's taken away. So, even if we have to. A L P, thank you. So, even if the master plan is due every 10 years, we can do the A L P here to do all that.
Are you familiar with the, the grant assurance number five that is included in the city's contracts with the FAA? It requires the city to maintain rights and powers sufficient to carry out its obligations?
Yes, I'm very familiar with all grant assurance requirements and I honestly believe that the city of Avon Park is involved in the master plan process, enable it effectively to approve community government, for the short-term, long-range goal of life, 20-year outlook of that master plan, to be updated every year, the A L P update. So, yes, sir, I do believe that we still gave compliance for all grant assurance, those folks approved the master plan and involved in that process. And that way, they would have complete oversight by agreement, the master plan on book of them to wear. And the FAA and F P O D do their annual inspection for the folks to ensure that where it might regard to normal daily operations, safety, security, and things like that, for the larger, the safe operation of the whole.
Jerry, could you state your name?
I'm sorry, Michael Powell, and I'm a huge person of seeing all aviation aspects of this partnership, and I've got some years' experience, and that's, I've been a CEO of a few.
Good, thank you.
And, and if you had the opportunity to run a lease such as this by the FAA that would basically devolve all of those rights and powers from the airport sponsor to the manager?
That would be a conversation that I can't speak, but the FAA, that they still surprise me, but yes, sir, that would definitely be a conversation that you have to have those folks to make sure the bubble that I have worked with, everybody that's been involved for years. I do believe they'd want a comfort level, knowing exactly who's gonna be doing what, so that they can make sure that their requirements are met.
I, I actually think that they're gonna want more than a comfort level with the folks who are gonna be doing that. They're going to insist upon the city, uh, under the current proposed structure. They're gonna insist upon the city having certain review and approval rights, or, or they will not approve the, the lease agreement.
So, at this point, it sounds like there's at least two questions now that the FAA would have to really, truly answer themselves. So, I assume there's probably gonna be more. So is there gonna be a mechanism at some point that we can ask the FAA or whomever they're going to designate to be over this project to give us a straight-up answer?
So, yeah, that's why we wanted to, if I can go back to the general terms and conditions, we're hoping to get board action on that, because even Mr. Perry made clear from the beginning that until the board makes affirmative action, that they work, we can't work in tandem and all, you know, work in concert to see this work. So, if, if, if even these general terms are met, and then we can all go to the FAA together and work out the more grand needs.
So, if, if, Mayor, if you got mine, I think it would be helpful to go through some key points.
Sure.
Um, yeah, I think this gets to Dave's question. So, on the issue of master plan, is your assumption that your approvals could be done by the city council?
For the master plan, yes, sir.
Yeah, amendments.
What's that?
Amendments.
Yeah, there's amendments, yeah.
Um, and grant requests?
Would be done by us. Oh, I mean, on behalf of the city, yes. No, that work would be done by us.
Okay, so you, you would do the work with the city council and actually back over?
Correct. And even when we submitted our, our, our original offer, what, what at the end was a build, operate, transfer, that we, because we were under the impression that first we retained the real estate that we developed, um, we, we had an invoicing procedure that we thought would be okay for that.
Okay, and what about sending rent rates?
Uh, no, we would, we would do that, because even in recent history, those rent rates are well below market value, which makes it very challenging on our end to try to turn this, uh.
So, if you're, your proposal is you can follow rent rates without any input from the city council?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you, question.
Go ahead.
The current, the current leases there now, would, would uphold to those, correct?
Yes, we're not, we're not trying to disrupt any flow, but even, even some of the tentative clients that we have now, they, they know what recent leases, transactions were made, and then they all went 60% below market value. Well, when we're approving amenities of the airport, eventually those rent rates will go up. And then it's a constant battle on our end, because we have, we have a, a third party that may not be aware of our objectives or how quickly we move those.
And yet, you're, you're, you're comfortable that those rates are gonna be reasonable under, under the test required by federal law?
Yeah.
I mean, the problem I have here is that the city is responsible under its grant assurances to ensure that the ra- rates for nautical facilities are set at reasonable levels. And yet, you're saying, yet you're saying that you don't want to give any approval rights to the city to review and approve those, those rents. So, let's take a, a highly theoretical supposition. What if you set rates at a level that, say, several tenants that bring a complaint to the FAA and say, these are unreasonable, um, they, they are too high, and, and we shouldn't have to pay them. The city is gonna have to defend that, and yet, you're, you're saying that, that you wouldn't give the city the ability to have any approval rights?
Every five years, there's a required appraisal, right, that'll determine that. That is also determined with the FAA. It is, where the appraisal has not been done for a number of years, we were the first appraisal done during this transaction process. Secondly, the, the type of tenants that we are bringing in there is way different than the majority of T hangers out there. There's only two paying businesses out there outside of the 200.
Well, I, I, I do want to make sure that the city council understands that there are plenty of tenants out there other than, than business tenants. And, and, and I totally take your point, that, that the business tenants are in a very different position and, and new ones are gonna be in a different place. But, uh, you know, folks that rent T-hangers that, that fly, you know, that fly out of there and base their aircraft at Avon Park Executive, um, are, are also, you know, people that, that will need to, um, you know, get your attention, right?
Yeah. So, JT, what, what is your mechanism for establishing rates? There has to be a somewhat straightforward one.
Yeah, you can use market cap rate side.
So, anytime you guys want to add something, just make sure you state your name, and I'll, so we can get it into the microphone, it'll pop up, or else go up to JT's microphone.
Yeah, it's okay. I'm Joe Fernandez, I'm a replant. Uh, with them. We're gonna use market cap rates. Uh, you'll adjust depending on, on the location, and it was similar to what we actually did in appraisal. So, basically, you're not just gonna create, generate, uh, rents based on some Lindsay. I mean, it's what someone's willing to pay in the market at that time. And so, if, any facility that you do, whether it's an improvement or a building of, of a facility, the market cap rates are guidance. When, that's how we do it. I mean, you don't just put up a white elephant and hope for a comp.
Right.
What is, is there the more, is there the market, like, like a county area or Central Florida or all?
Yeah, you, you, so, so in some markets, it's very difficult to actually, for instance, this is a rural area. So, you tend to drop, uh, or raise the cap rate. Someone would be willing to spend less to, to capitalize a project here and to, or pay rents. So, uh, if I did it in Orlando, it would be a different series of cap rates. So, we'd, we'd adjust. And so, we, we don't want to be, have, and we don't want you to have buildings ultimately. And this happens a lot at airports. You'll get somebody come in and capitalize a hangar, and then they leave, and the airport gets stuck with that hangar and the maintenance of, maintenance of that hangar. So, we want to make sure that we're keeping that, that we're retaining tenants. So we want to make sure that we're keeping that tenant, we're retaining tenants, and we're keeping those tenants. I I hope that answers.
I have one question.
Hold on one second. You asked this gentleman?
Yeah, I mean, I'm understanding that anytime that you go to set some rates, you have to get pre-approval from the FAA, what direction to go. Is that not true?
Well, generally, they want you, whether it's a ground lease or building lease, they want you want to make sure it's fair market value. So that's where the the market capitalization rates would come in. That you're going to support that.
But you're going to go to FAA in advance that they agree with that?
If 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 it's a requirement in the process, then yes. But if not, if you know, if we're agreed upon that, that these are the fair market values, then then we're fine.
Yeah.
Yes, of course.
Folks, what I wanted to add is that's exactly what the fair market value appraisal does. You acquire every public asset, every public use airport is required to do an appraisal to set their market value every five years. And these folks, a group like Mike Johnson, that's one of the biggest ones in the state of Florida, those folks compare fifty similar geographical locations, cost of living areas to get you very, very close to something similar. Not going to compare you against Orlando International Airport so that they're actually fair to the good folks that are utilizing these services. And you sometimes will get a range, and you're very, very tight within that range. But that range is what the FAA will say agreed to that appraisal. They say that is fair market value. So if you go to the low end or the high end, we're still within what the FAA considers fair market value. So we're implementing a range.
And I mean, ultimately, you just scare all tenants away. So you've got a problem on your hands. So you have a vested interest to make sure that the delivery. So is there any scenario that any of our advisors can think of where it would benefit them to raise the price to such a point that no one wants to be there?
Yeah, there are certainly scenarios where that happens. We've seen that at at other airports where, for example, they would prefer the existing fixed base operator who provides basically all the services to the G A airport operators would would raise the rent of of land on the airport to an unreasonably high amount in order to keep out competition. So that's that's one place where that that certainly can happen. I'm not saying.
But in that scenario, ultimately, doesn't the customer simply go to Sebring or any other airport?
Well, they 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 can. If they've got a if they've got a lease at at A V O, then they have a problem because that's where their aircraft is based and they're paying rent there. But presumably, they can fly into Sebring and fuel up it.
But would they look into a lease that would keep them there without price guarantees? I mean, are you going to, is it realistic to think that someone would put themselves in a lease and says, I'm going to lease this property for thirty years, but I have no control what the rate is?
Um, I I I think most most commercial folks are going to be that way, but you might find that many of the people in the T hangers are, you know, sign a sign a lease and are looking to just have a place that's close by to operate out of. But I I the the question I was kind of curious about is whether or not FAM was considering having dual rate methodologies because the the FAA requirements for non-aeronautical leases are clearly fair market value and and everything I've heard is completely consistent with what FAA requires. But FAA also has a different standard for aeronautical facilities, and that doesn't necessarily have to be a fair market value because sometimes you, in order to make, you know, good use of a federally funded facility for aeronautical purposes, you may need to charge a little less than fair market value. And I haven't really been hearing any discussion about that other than to note that the current agreements are all significantly below fair market value, which you know, it's it it may well be true, but is likely to cause some real sticker shock to the folks that are currently operating.
This is, this is mayor. What what's really standard on an airport, especially for commercial lease, is there's mechanisms so that folks have a very good understanding of what those potential increases are to be. You have C P I, Consumer Price Index. Some of the larger folks can just simply have evaluation based on appraisal and or quotes. And the commercial folks, there's also the opportunity where if those folks are making quite a bit of money off the assets that may be maintained and provided, then you can get two percent of gross receipts. So there's a lot of different opportunities for an entity working for a public entity to get money from these folks, even if they're under value on the leases. But that's usually standard language in any public asset. And that's what the FAA looks at. Those are all mechanisms they use to evaluate fair market value. So you have a range within an appraisal, and there's other items that are built in for lease that you can put in there as T hangar folks, that's commercial lease, that's everyone. So that they're standard language. So someone's not getting sweetheart deal, and everybody else is playing by the same rules. So there's a lot of different ways so that you can meet those compliance requirements.
So to to answer his, Dave's question about the dual rates, that's something that you guys have established?
Actually, anything like that would also need satisfied in the appraisal. The reason why you have an appraisal, you have to have about fifty years of experience. Like I said, they're going to do like what we should have here with fifty other similar public use airports doing all of the the United States. So we're going to have a mechanism that is independently done. And once it's approved, the FAA and everybody passed around that we have to work. You can't just make up the price on our guests. You can't do that. That's why you have an appraisal to prove. And that way, everybody should know the range for what. And of course, there is a mechanism if if people believe that somebody is providing a public service, a lot of times the law, of course, they're on the airport, they're actually using that for their helicopter down on rescue mission, whatever that is. There's a lot of mechanisms out there. If there's a public asset, maybe they can do something in time, but what was that rate? But everything in this legality has to have the FAA say, okay, that holds by itself. We believe it's fair market value for the United States. There's a lot of different ways, but a lot of oversight to ensure that the FAA gets the fact of it.
Okay. And and a scenario where tenants complained to the FAA, then you dealt with this area, what's that? This is almost a database of twenty years. How does that process hold in effect?
If you're doing anything, we're just supposed to do, which we would, the FAA is going to say, well, you know, they're going to think it's supposed to. But a lot of the ways that you protect yourself and protect the community that you're working for is on lease, the lease plan you do there. You know, you've got to consider price index, they go exactly where it's mine. And you get in a place where it says you can only change it within this amount. And so all that together, it gives everybody, we live without the app, or we can't just come out of that field and charge one person twenty-three cents per square foot annual, and the next person tends to compare. You can't do that. And that's why we have standard language and standard leases. One person should be able to see a lease from one person, all of them, another person, and another person, it's all standardized. And that's what the FAA wants to see. The reason why we do all this is the FAA definitely wants to see us giving our body a break within the charging too much than everyone else on that. Everybody has an equal playing field. It's based on professional documents that we have from independent entities doing and submitting that we ultimately have to really thought of that today. And so the master plan, in conjunction with the appraisal, should give everybody the comfort level they need to do exactly what it's supposed to. Like I said, the the language and the leases that the FAA looks for so that you can ensure that we're not self-esteem, that hopefully we won't come just asking plans to do what we want to do on that.
You you mentioned that you're the CEO of three different airports at one time or another. So are any of those airports, do you have any experience where you have a government-owned facility that needs by a private company?
Oh, well, they all are. If you build them, you're the government entity, and any corporation comes and builds it. I mean, similar to what this situation where you're leasing the entire property.
Any portion of the property?
Uh, no, ma'am, not other than you have groups that do certain operations. You do a very, one of the airports is very weathering currently, and we have a lot of agreements with the state department, forestry during certain situations happening in the United States. They want to stay there. We have a F D L, they have a large state.
But nothing long-term like what you're looking for. So I see Mr. Santiago back there nodding his head. I didn't see him say something. I just like your.
Yeah, at any point, the only thing we're trying to do is capture all the comments in the record. So at any point that you guys need to add something, feel free to come to the microphone. As long as you give your name and address, fist name, and what you want to say in the microphone, we're fine.
Okay, so I'll give you an example. The Jet, the Jet Blue facility, Orlando International Airport, that's based on ground lease. They're able to build, master plan, do everything they want to do on that property. They're they're just paying Goa around these. As they capitalize, Goa actually incentivizes them by taking it out of their ground. So that's what those capital buildings go to Goa at the end of their lease. And that's a long-term lease. So they actually, I think they they have a twenty-five-year lease with extension. So that happens quite often on public property. And for instance, you hear about SpaceX and Blue Origin, the future. That's, you know, that's technically spaceport, but it's not, I like that as well. So Blue Origin, Jeff Bezos comes in, he capitalizes the structure. And they they take it out of the ground. It's over a fifty-one-year deal. So he actually has a fifty-one-year. So they they negotiate resources versus capitalization. The infrastructure town provided by the airport or the United States, they put that top. What happens all the time? Uh, it just, what the FAA wants to make sure is that you're getting fair market value for that ground. And that's, that's, that's just the same case for everything we do. So any property that someone takes over, they want to make sure they're getting a fair market.
So several, like what you're explaining here, are the three keys in in a section of an airport. I mean, is that what you're explaining here? Is that it is a capitalized, they're they're mortgaging the the government property so that they can go ahead and get loans and things like what you're doing. I think that was kind of the question.
Is in some cases, the state comes in and assists with match funding. It's a bunch, it's really a variety of options. So and and the federal properties, they, the federal government can't transfer to a private company. So the state of Florida will fund it, and they will take over the property from a management standpoint. But the the actual development of that property is all paid for with a little bit of match funding by, again, Jeff Bezos or Jeff. So it it it's simply sometimes. Yes, and 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 on many, done many times.
Right, and and council member, that's essentially a private building. They have ground lease where you can do for, and they say in this, they build that building. This would be a question for Pam, if you just take the money or not, or if you know, it's a senior. Whereas if you make a private investment for another girlfriend, that's a private investment, you can open your credit app. But that's something that I have talked about previously, the way to, if you want to take a property to the city, we don't have that sense.
Yeah, and we would consider depreciation over time.
Right.
Rekapitalization of the structures.
Councilor, essentially, the city developer comes in and does a, you're a non-aeronautical building. Own there, they're paying for that with private funds. They have ground lease in your place, they pay ground lease. And at the end of the lease, that will come to the property. And so you can't be the credit, that investment goes to the property.
Yeah, I'd just like to make sure that we understand the distinction between the the JetBlue project, which was admittedly a large project in several phases in this one. JetBlue did lease a substantial amount of space. But in the context of of Orlando International Airport, it's fairly small piece of the airport that was set aside for development. It's not like they leased the entire airport and were controlling everything about the airport. And, you know, I worked on the project with with Goa and you know, JetBlue came in with with a specific set of plans and Goa worked with them to refine those and to work on the financing plan. But at the end of the day, that was a piece of the airport that was independent of the runways, the the terminals, all of the airside pieces of the of the airport that remained under the control of the airport authority. And and so part of what's really difficult here, and and the analogies are are helpful to a certain extent, but the fact is that the FAA looks at the lease of an entire airport extremely differently than they do when you're looking at leasing a portion of it for a specified kind of development. And that's kind of where, you know, we're concerned that we want to be sure that the city is well protected from from any any problems with the FAA on that. Because when the entire airport is leased out, the city has considerably less control than in a situation where, say, a portion of it is is leased for for a non-aeronautical facility.
Yeah, can I come to ask you?
Yeah, can we now respond to that question first so we don't get lost?
Okay, so I'm just going to respond to the to the general question. Goa has eight thousand acres of developable property that is not airfield-related, not directly used related. Okay, now the FAA does control the airspace, and in fact, there are certain areas that they don't want you building when you, because of noise and maintenance programs and things like that. But they have eight thousand acres, greenfield property, and they have tradeport drive, which is fairly well-enveloped. That's kind of outside the fence line. So so to to give you a question, Goa will, for instance, Goa as an airport, they will develop any portion of those eight thousand acres as as they please, essentially. What what works for them to bring economic development after that airport, JetBlue is one. And and it is one, Signature has their property on the other side on tradeport. And FedEx is over there, and those are sometimes the basis, those are basic leases of the cargo area. But yeah, I mean, they're they're willing to develop all eight thousand acres at one point. It's just about market.
Right.
It's the market's it. But if they get, they can have a development effort. For instance, on East Airport, that's thirteen hundred acres. And they, I'm going to give you an example. They get Mitsubishi to come over Mitsubishi Aviation, they'll, they will lease that entire property in Mitsubishi Aviation. They'll do the same matter that they did the JetMipso. So I I understand his point. I just, it's it's all, it's all about the economic development.
So I have a question to the attorneys and maybe I don't know, you're going to have to kind of follow away. I'm thinking here. Is the issue of the procurement and the oversight of ownership, I mean, you know, if they were to lease the whole thing like they're like they want? If you separated that, that would be okay? The way you see everything here, if they were to do that, or or is the big concern more of the bird's eye view of there's procurement, there's FAA assurances and all those other things that tie into the management of the airport and the grants and the funding mechanisms from the federal government and the state government? Is that a separate issue?
Well, at the end of the day, you still are responsible to FAA as the city of Avon Park. So so the issue is for you as a council and for FAA and F D O, what is the level of oversight to be done? And that's really, that's really a key question. And what we've heard so far is FAM said for master master plan updates, the city would approve those. And they said also for grant applications, the city would approve those. For rent, they've said they would manage that on their side. And essentially sublease agreements as well. So those those are kind of levels that you see, and that's really a policy question, but it's also going to be an FAA and an F D O review question. Because they're going to say, you, city, are you comfortable with that? And if something comes up, how are you going to manage that?
So is is it conceivable that that we can get an agreement that is negotiated and then is submitted to F D O, FAA, they approve it, but still we end up on the hook with FAA, F D O because of something that FAM does?
Yes, yes, that's.
Always going to be a question. And if the common issues that come up, whether it's a sublease agreement, I mean, either the gentleman over here is saying he can find four comments periodically routinely, and that's going to continue. So the issue for you as elected officials is if those come up and they bubble up, they will. Okay, and I've been in that government official, they're going to call you. Okay, so the question's going to be, how does that get handled? Yeah. And and if and if you go to FAM and FAM goes, I'm not putting words in your mouth, please understand, but they say, hey, that's my life, I'm saying. What are you going to do?
They get a comment as well.
So I I I think the the, maybe the crux of the matter is that a standard provision in agreements between airport sponsors like the city and developers like FAM is a clause that subordinates the agreement to its existing and future grant agreements. And and we suggested that in the term sheet that we sent back to FAM, and FAM's response was to turn that to a hundred and eighty degrees and say that the lease would be subor, excuse me, that the grant agreements would be subordinated to the lease. So the situation that we're trying to set up is that you're not caught between your federal obligations. You've got contractual obligations to the federal government from the grants you've taken and your contractual obligations to FAM, which would be enforceable under Florida state law. And what Jerry's asking is, could those two come into? And what Jerry's asking is, could those two come into conflict? And the answer is absolutely yes, and that's why that subordination clause is, is very standard practice and something that the FAA recommends. What, what fam would do by turning that on its head would actually make it even more risky for the city in that it would say that no matter what the, the federal grant requirements are, they're subordinated to the requirements of the lease. So the, the situation that we're trying to set up is if indeed fam does something that is perhaps allowable under the lease, but the FAA comes along and says, you know, that, that just can't be done. Here's, and gives you the reason for it and says, what the, what the FAA will typically do is say, if they find you in violation of your grant assurances, you have to establish a corrective action plan. And you as the city, not fam. So if you're, if you have a subordination clause such as that, then the city can go to fam and say, look, we've got to change the way you're doing business in this specific situation. It may be rates and charges, it may be the terms of the sublease, it could be a number of things. But, but you have to change that. And, and if we can basically point to this clause in the agreement that says that your obligations under this are subject to our federal requirements. And, 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 and so when fam came back with that response, I've never seen, I, I, I've seen plenty of, of, of developers push back on that, on that language. But, but I've never seen a developer that was very, very familiar with airport development. Um, and, and I, I think that that's something that gave us some real concern. And I'd be very interested to see what fam's response is to, to that concept. Because fundamentally, that's what the city needs, that's the position the city needs to be in. That it is not going to get whipsawed between the agreement with fam and its grant agreements with, with both the FAA and FDOT.
Yeah, fam, I'm not really sure.
E.C. Roberts, COO, fam operations. So I, I know what you're completely talking about, you're talking about subordination of funds, okay? You're, you're talking about whether or not we're going to adhere to the grant assurances to make sure that we're, we're following what they are correctly, right?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm saying that there, we had asked that the agreement, that we put a term into the response from the city to fam um, that would have made any agreement between the city and fam subject and subordinate to the city's grant assurances. And the ci-, and when, when fam responded with your, um.
I know exactly what you're talking about, sir.
Okay.
The word subordinate, we meant the funds. We meant that the city wouldn't be able to hold on to those funds and then tell us where they were going to go or what was going to happen. We wanted the funds to be subordinate to us, to be able to fulfill the master plan, uh, what we sent for the master plan with data and review too. So there'd be a flow through. We did not mean that we would take over that grant assurance to be subordinated to us. We meant the funds would be subordinate to us. We obviously have to still maintain whatever those grant assurances are that the FAA requires. We have to abide by those. We are not saying that they're going to subordinate to us. We will always subordinate to those grant assurances. What we meant was the funds will be subordinate so that the city would not maintain them and then divvy them out as they saw fit. It would come directly through the city to us so that we could continue with our master plan progression.
Okay, that's, that's.
You can subordinate in one way, and see, that's why we want to have these talks, because.
Yep, no, this is, that's very, very helpful. So i- i- in, in other words, you would help develop the grant application, the city would, would approve it and send it to the FAA? And then the grant funds for the approved project would, would be yours to use for that project? Is that kind of?
That's what I was saying with the subordination, you say subordinate, I understand how you saw it, but the word subordinate, we meant the funds, not the grant assurance. So, so we would abide by the grant assurance, we have to.
So the question would be, would you be happy with the provision that they were suggesting? They would give the city the right to step in, that FAA bought something from the outside?
Yes, absolutely, even our original offer to the city, that was clearly in there, uh, we put a clause in there, if we were short cash somewhere, that they, that, you know, they could take it out of that fund or whatever, there wasn't invoicing proceed to put it up. And I want to further say that we've advocated on behalf of this municipal report, uh, lobbying efforts. Uh, we can't officially do it because we don't have agreements, lobbies, but we've been trying to work our channels. And so if we get some for reoccurring appropriations or to achieve our mission objective, we don't want that to be filled up. Hey, you can get it done, follow all the rules, we're awarded those appropriations. So, or any other type of, uh, joint venture agreements, whether that's FAA, FDAA, USDA, you know, those would be good for.
One, uh, Mayor, uh, one, I don't know, you guys identified was the funds from the city? Uh, that have been accumulated from CRA to be available, could you please explain on what your content areas, what you're just going to be using it for?
Yeah, so on the CRE fund, again, I was under the impression that CRA was involved, we'd already put it out there, I'd already had discussions with several other members about this, that will go to the full industry builders to renovate that.
I object to that, I think that the CRA funding is there to remove the slum and blight of other businesses in the area that are part of the airport. And in my opinion, if we're going to have to use general fund money, if we desperately need to pay for our share, we should be giving the CRA money to fix the classic colladium building. Um, and other buildings that are around the area that are part of the airport property. So, you know, those were intended for, you know, business beside improvements and, and assisting the city in offsetting expenses that the city would have had. And by fixing the pool hangar for you, it's not offsetting our expenses, it's making us use general fund money to go work on the classic colladium building instead. So, you know, it comes down to budget as well, unless we've got the surplus of cash to go fix the other buildings, meaning classic colladium. I, I just don't think that those CRA dollars need to go to classic colladium, that's just me. You have nearly, what was it that you said, half a million dollars probably of repairs to that building? We don't know what that is, but nonetheless, we need to put a program in place to get that done because we have a contract with them that's supersede yours. And we are on the hook to fix that building right now, we don't have money to do it, and the CRA can do it.
What was the CRA funds, um, told you, if I know anything?
It's about one seventy, one fifty?
We're on paper, seven hundred and eighty-three thousand.
Yeah.
And it shows me that it was given.
It's still sitting there, it's sitting in the budget somewhere in the, it hasn't been spent on the pool hangar yet.
Yeah, but, but how much was that, eighty-five, it's like eighty-three? Yeah, it's not quite enough.
No. It's not quite enough. But, I mean, it leaves us on the lurch of having to pay for something else. But you have all these loans coming to you, you have forty million dollars worth of loans, I mean, why can't you use that for the pool building?
We can, but, I mean.
I mean, we don't have that luxury, we don't have a forty million dollar line of credit.
We don't have it yet. We're still going to get through this down the lease.
Yeah, and we don't have a hundred and fifty thousand to go fix a roof right now, we don't, other than the CRA funding. That's just me, the rest of the council would have to decide on that as well, but I'm of the opinion that the CRA money needs to go to, um, work on those other buildings that are in there, because otherwise there's nothing for them.
Okay, anything else?
You seem a little apprehensive, oh, in, in answering the question that Councilwoman Sutherland just said. Is, is there something that you're just not telling us, are you, are you okay with what? And I do agree with what she just said, but are you okay with that, or is there something going on that we don't know? I know we can't go any further until we do things, you seem a little apprehensive.
It's Monday.
No, and you know what, I've honestly, I've had this conversation with him, he's already had it, and I've, I've said to him in the past, I have no problem voicing my opinion in public.
The CRA, it's not a make or break, again.
I know it's not.
When, when we first went down this road, we were, and, and I'd like to back up a few steps too, and this was David's comment earlier. When we saw that there was no operational management going on here, we decided as an organization to step up and try to assist the city of Aon Park. Not to try to, you know, Bogart or who, you know, there was, there's a need that has to be done here, we have our mission objectives, they do all.
Thank you.
Mr. Clary, anything else?
We're going to go to each item.
Just a couple other, I don't think, you know, I bet you want to break your own.
Well, I just think there's a lot of big ones that are still out there.
Uh, if you know, can one guy want to transfer to the play of the nation, can you give us an idea of what you're talking about? Normally that's not necessarily a main issue of the term sheet, so we're just trying to understand what.
We have an AC above us, and it just completely draws you out.
The question was, could they transfer from fam to an affiliated entity this lease? Okay, so, and, and their ask is to be able to do that without city council approval? Or without any other approval? So, so the question, my question is, is there something there that is of interest or intent? Or is this just a general item, or kind of what's your thinking?
It's just a general item, it's a long lease. So if it is the same, from the same family and companies that, I mean, I didn't, I go through the whole PB three twenty-one day notice, restructure the agreement. If there, if there had to be a transfer.
Well, not, not, it would not need to be an advertisement, but the issue would be, and Dave, you can add more light here. The question's going to be their hiring plan. That's who they're leasing with, so if they're going to a different company, does that company have the same qualifications, does it have the same people? You know, they would want to know that. So, so the question would be, kind of, what's your thought?
I understand what you're saying completely, you want to know whether or not we have an actual intent to change to somebody or if this might be down the line. It was just future thinking of if we decided to allow another affiliate of ours, somebody in our sister company, whatever it is related to us, that they're going to take over. So the answer to that question is, we simply wanted to make sure that if we had an affiliate, meaning somebody with our company, they wanted to take it over, that would be allowed. Well, you keep, hold on a second, please. In, in the terms, we s-, we specifically stated that there would be a liaison with the city. We're not doing this behind the city's back. We're never going to just do something without, it's, it's not about getting city's approval or trying to do something behind your back. It's about us being, having the ability to do it internally and talk to the liaison and say, hey, we're going to allow, we want to just have this company be the one that's going to manage the airport at this point in time. Just to give you guys a heads up, so we don't have to go through an entire process again of what we're talking about, which is twenty-one day notice. That's what we were concerned with, is having to do all that.
Notice, that's not really the issue. The issue is to ensure qualifications, et cetera.
Right.
From that perspective, so the question would be, under their requirements and their grant assurances? Uh, they may not want to see that.
But in, in a typical, a typical clause for that is basically with the city's approval, which approval will not be unreasonably withheld. I, you know, I've never seen anybody have a problem with that unless they want to have to be unreasonable with it. So, I mean, just having one side say, you know, we can't say anything about our transfer, we're going to have a problem with that. But if we can say, we can, with our approval, which approval will not be unreasonably withheld, you have a basis by which we are being reasonable, that you can eliminate it.
And when you say transfer airport management, well, what happened to the existing airport management? I mean, if that were to happen, I mean, all you guys go away? Just ask, just ask.
We would make sure the same structures that you're requiring, that it, there'd be an airport manager, and there'd be the CEO of your airport, there'd be the secretary sitting there. There's, whatever, whatever we turn it into, we might have a tower eventually, we might do a bunch of things, and you'll go, you know what? You add it to, and now we'll make it that's a requirement that goes forward.
So is that part of your business model though, just as a question? Is that part that you develop in airport, that you develop the, the social and physical infrastructure for humans to be out there and whatnot? And then sell that whole system to somebody else, or?
Negative, that's why we said affiliate, because we want to keep it internal, it's not about selling it to anybody else. That's why it's simply, we just stated, it was simply affiliate, we didn't even mention about third party. As a matter of fact, we did mention third party, we said we strictly had to get approval from you guys if we went the third party, third party route, because you guys would have to do all the vetting to make sure that they would meet the grant assurances and meet your guys' standards. It was in the term sheet specifically.
So you guys didn't seem like you were at issue with having the city approve any transfer at least, right?
So as long as it's reasonable, absolutely, if you say, hey, you guys approved it, it's this now?
Right.
It's got to meet that same requirement?
Fantastic, we'll do exactly what you said. Non-issue then.
Yeah.
Next. I ask about the insurance provisions, because I, I, I had not seen something like this requested before. Um, fam has requested that basically they, uh, I'm trying to figure out the best way to put this, and I don't want to be pejorative, but uh, it, it almost looks like you're suggesting that fam could piggyback on the city's insurance policy. And, you know, given, given that, that I don't believe that's permissible, but also given the very different risk profile of a city under Florida law versus a private entity under Florida law, it, it strikes me that that probably wouldn't provide adequate coverage for fam or the city. Could you kind of explain your thinking on that?
Yeah, so two parts here, uh, one was the assignment of the current, uh, insurance claims are outstanding, I just want to clarify that, so we can make sure that the insurance, uh, money that was issued is justifies, uh, the work that needs to be done. Number two, for example, uh, the Tampa Bay Aquarium, uh, is ran by a third party entity and they are under comprehensive liability of Tampa. So that, that is common practice as far as comprehensive liability.
Are they nonprofit?
No. So that part, again, comprehensive only, we can be insured, uh, that a writer on, on the city's policy, it's not a requirement, just, just something I'll put out there. Number two, as far as directors of, uh, the hangar keeper's liability, I mean, we can get something, the, the fuel farm's going to have a, have to have a separate judicial policy. Question was, do we go out and go get our own, or do we just start assuming the payments of the policy that was already in place? So a lot of this was just kind of ease of transaction, it wasn't like we were trying to dumb up any of that, it was just, you know, like.
Like I said, I, I had not seen something like that, and I, I, I've got to believe that the risk profile is very different and, and uh, you know, saw an underwriter that is underwriting a city operating in airport is looking at a very different picture than underwriting a private entity, so, um, I, I, I'd be, be shocked if it, it provided full coverage. And, you know, as, as Jerry can explain better than I, the, the, you know, liability for negligence, for example, there, the sovereign immunity means that the city doesn't have to carry certain kinds of coverage that obviously fam works.
And, and we self-insure for pollution insurance and things like that. The, uh, but we, we require all less, less fees to, to cover pollution insurance.
Yeah, pollution is a separate thing, the comprehensive liability, so. But, you know, and while we're talking about this, the indemnity insurance, uh, we're working with Emmy Wilson out of Tampa, they've been doing this for over a hundred years. They, uh, do not, they don't, they'll write a, they'll issue a letter that because we're not a consultant for a fee in this matter, there's not going to be an underwriter that will cover that indemnity insurance. Because that's just not how that insurance is written.
So what's the end result here, you still want to have it to wear your, wear, your umbrella under the city?
It's never, it was just an option.
No, I, I know, but nothing has been decided, that that was an option, but what is the final outcome on that?
We can go get our own comprehensive liability, we can go get our own hangar keeper. The only one I'm saying is, I'm not sure we get indemnity because we can't find an underwriter because the, the basis of indemnity insurance would be consultant for a fee. So you guys are, in this scenario, the way we got it structured, DBFOM, you're not paying us to be here, right? That part is our responsibility.
I just want to bring up that there would also have to be an escalation in the insurance coverage, obviously, this, we talked about forty-nine year contract. What is today, you know, uh, appropriate limit, limit on the pollution or comprehensive? It's going to be inappropriate in ten years, and really inappropriate in twenty, and so on. So we have to have somehow reopen it or, uh.
On, on the insurance, on the insurance side, I, uh, Emmy Wilson, this is one of the reasons why we wanted to back up. Hey, because can we speak, can our insurance companies get involved to work this out? Can we sit down directly with the FAA and work out their, their certain issues that they have? Because, I mean, again, I'm not the underwriter for insurance, you know, they, they have, in fact, what they're saying about indemnity, I want to throw to them.
Well, I have no problem with them working out some of the details, the final details, that obviously have to be worked out by us, because the insurance company is, that probably is one of the most uh, self-interested companies that you could possibly find. So, you know, we would want to make sure we're, our interests were also looked at.
Absolutely, and at the end of the day, everybody's just waiting to see what this looks like.
And they, they don't care, they don't care if you have five hundred thousand dollars worth of coverage, but that's all they're going to cover, you know, but we do.
Right.
Couple of clarifications I think would be helpful for the council, you mentioned you do a general master plan and design services. Do you have that on the team now, how would you prefer it to kind of get to an ideal, if you think it is?
Go with the mic, please. He's talking to a guy today.
Santiago Fernandez, I'm director of planning for the group, um, so I.
So I am an urban planner and I'm an architect. I've been in this business for 30 years. What you see being built at OI International Airport, that's my master planning work. I'm just giving some, you know, my qualifications. I've worked at large airports and small airports. I presented this before. So, yes, we have the ability onboard. We have Michael, who has managed airports of this size for 20 years. So we understand the master planning process. We're going to go through that master planning process. We're going to update the master plan periodically. We're going to, so we're going to do some interim updates to this. The first phases of what we're going to do is going to have to be that. Because if we're going to move forward into the future, you know, we got to get into a five-year funding program, SIP program approaches, and find out where these funding sources are coming from. It's not all going to be FAA grants, so, it's what we do for a living, of plans. So, does that answer your question? Do you need a little more specific?
I guess the question would be, if you're going to be getting design services or construction services, how do you anticipate?
Yeah, so I think we wrote that in the general conditions, is that we intend to do planning for architecture, engineering. We might have some environmental groups come in and study certain areas. So we are, especially in the role that I've had as an OAR services to many airports and general consulting services, we have a list of consultants that we use and like to use over time. Whatever we can do in-house, we're going to procure that internally from consultants in the industry, which I, obviously being here 30 years, I have a long list of this. And so, I, that answer a little more of my attention.
The question would be, are you going to use the city's procurement processes? Are you going to use your own? What's your?
Yeah, I think depending on the project, I mean, you might use design bid-build, or you might use design-build. So, specific to the project, we would see whether, you know, obviously time is a factor in some of the work that we do. So, what we'll do in the initial is, from the master planning side, is produce our own master plan, which we can do in-house, and then get FAA, move it up the chain of command and get FAA approval. So, identify specific projects. So, I think we'll have the ability to move outside of, for some projects, move outside of a traditional city or federal, state, or local process of procurement. We might take three bids on a quals basis, and select the group that we like to go with.
Can I interrupt just for a second here? I think you're leading towards if you had projects that were of your own expense. I think you're referencing FAA and FDOT grants, for example, the procurement for this.
We would meet their guidelines.
Yeah, those are guidelines, so.
Or city funding.
Right, right.
Or city funding. We would meet those guidelines.
Right.
So what are those guidelines in your purview? Would that be going through the city, where someone from the city staff would have to do all the paperwork, comes to council for approval on the contracts and all that?
No, I mean, typically what's done is you have a selection committee, and in this case, we would have our staff be part of that. We might have a city sit in on the selection process. What, you know, the city liaison might sit on, it might be a panel of four, might advise us what group they prefer. So we'll have a point system that will, within our own structure, we'll have a point system that we rate these companies. Generally, a lot of airports are selecting consultants. You might select two architecture consultants, two engineering consultants, similar to what you have currently, you have an engineering consultant, basically. So we might have them already onboard, and then use them per project. So, it might be a quals-based, where there's no specific project for them to procure, for us to procure, but we have them onboard as we need them. And so, it also ensures that we're getting the attention from, you know, this architecture firm, and this architecture firm, for maybe a five-year period. You know, so that's.
Santi.
Yes.
I may expand a little.
Yes, sure.
May I? Yes. Every single thing that we're done has to be in compliance with FAA requirements. So with regard to A and E firms, there is a master agreement, and it has to be set up exactly the way that the FAA expects to see that language in there. You can select the firms, you can have two, three, 10 on there, and you put everything that the kitchen's saying in there. So if we want to come up with something outside of purview, master plan, you know, drive retention, something environmental, it's already in there. And firms that you have selected have that breadth of knowledge and experience, and they can go do that. Even with regard to an RFP, RFQ, if you're going out, if you're looking for any services, or even when you're going out on the street for a particular project, and you know, you want solicitors, you want a construction company to bid on this, the first half of that document is exactly how the FAA requires that document to be written, so that if they're getting any grant funds to the project, they want to meet their compliance requirements. Just about every single thing that you're doing, and every document that you produce has to be approved, and it has, most of them are already out there that the FAA has already said okay to. So everything from our selection criteria to any other entities that are going to work with us, to going out on the street to bid a project. The amount of time that you have solicitation out there, based on how complex the project is, all of that is governed to a certain degree. So there's already guidance out there, and I mean, it's expected that anybody running a public entity on an airport, it's done that way. I mean, that's just the way that it's done, or you don't get the grant funds. I mean, that's FAA and FDOT, it's already out there.
But at the same time, the city has been the one that does the procurement. We follow our procurement policies, the 30-day notice and all that stuff. What you're saying is, is that we would not do any of that, that the grant assurances would allow, for you to do all that on your own without any city input or oversight of any kind, and it would bypass our procurement policies? You would do your own policies, right?
I believe so, I believe by.
And is that FAA allowed?
Well, to the extent that it's city funds or grants, would seem to me you'd still have to, like, for A and E, you'd still have to get CCNA, the Competitive Consulting Negotiation Act, it would have to be followed. It wouldn't be your program, it would be stat by statute.
Correct, yes.
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 Okay.
But I'll just reify, not all the work that will be done on the master plan will be procured by an outside entity. We have a lot of in-house capability to do that.
But when you do. With that in-house, I mean, exactly, they have an existing engineer in there, communicated in your updated proposal that you would want the ability to change that if you wanted to. So what is your intent?
Our intent is to, our intent, as the DBFOM, is to come in and take a look at this airport, assess this airport in the first phase of what we do. Then we will decide, safety and security is going to be a big priority for us initially. So that, for instance, the project that you all have identified, which is a repaving, that may not be the initial priority of what we're doing. We might put that on hold. In other words, we have to function according to the business model that we're coming in, not perpetuate a business model that, in fact, we feel is not making money. So, that's what we're going to do. We're going to assess, then we're going to replan accordingly. We're going to prioritize projects based on a new capital improvement structure. What is there of the master plan? And of course, there's a lot of things that need to be done out here. What's there in the master plan, some projects will remain, and then some will evolve. I mean, we have, we've shown you plans of what we intend to do out here. And so, one particular building may, like pool building, that may be our first priority. So, that's how we plan on approaching this. So we're not here, in other words, and I've done this for many years, as a general consultant, as an OAR, priority projects are priority projects, and what's necessary. So those are things that we're going to identify. You'll have the city liaison.
Does the city have any input?
We will work with the city liaison to allow them to see what we plan on doing, what our priority list are. And we did state that, we did state that. Well, we did state that we will report what our intent is, and where our future is going. In other words, annual report, and continuous communication with the city on what our plans are as we move forward.
I have a question in regards to that process in terms of the grants. Would you see the city as the pass-through? Would we be doing the drawdowns and submitting the requests for reimbursement and all of that?
Yeah.
So if we are doing that, does that mean that when, so like you said, that you guys have in-house people? Would that be something that you bill the grant?
Yeah, we would assist with procuring the grant, the write-up, the whole portion.
So you would have to be a subcontractor to whoever does the contracting of the engineering? Because in essence, you're picking yourselves as the contractors for the airport, if you're doing that and you're billing the grants. And if it's a pass-through, that means that goes through the city, we have to do the drawdowns, and then we reimburse you. That's basically what you're asking, I mean, that's how you, we'd have to reimburse you.
You would reimburse the project, and there's several entities under that project that are going to get reimbursed.
And those are you?
Yeah, the airport itself.
Right, so that was my point. You know, when you go through the procurement side of things, what you're saying is that you're going to have a library of engineers and things and all that, but they're really you. So, you know, when you say there's a point system awarded to all of that, it's really favored to you. So you are cornering the market with all the grants. Am I wrong in assuming that?
Yeah, I wouldn't say we're cornering the market.
Well, I mean, I don't know what other kind words to put. I'm sometimes at a loss of kind words.
Well, in your selection of, in your selection of FAM, that is the procurement.
Right.
That's the initial procurement.
Okay, so then we're procuring FAM to do it, and if that's the case, then you guys. But nonetheless, it would be Danielle's job to do all the down, everything. She would be the one dealing with the FAA in regards of drawdowns and compliance, and then our audits and everything else, that's expenses that we will have on our side. And those dollars would be factored in into reimbursements to the city, right?
I didn't, in proposals, I didn't see any qualifications for other, there was no architectural engineering other than the one gentleman. There were no firms listed, there was no, so.
We don't have a firm right now to do a specific project. We will procure those firms as we move forward, as necessary.
Okay.
So what we're trying not to do is have the city, for instance, after we've taken over that airport, have to go through this procurement process for whoever we want to bring in at this airport. That's not the business model.
I mean, we've had in the past contractors at the airport for 10 years. Wilbur Smith was there for 10 years. And now we have Kim Lee Horn. So what would happen to Kim Lee Horn, for example? Would you come in and then be their subcontractor? Or, I mean, they have finished their current job, right?
May he speak on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, one thing we'd have to do is an initial assessment. Safety and security is always the biggest requirement expected from the FAA and FDOT. And I've already gone out there and taken a look at the facility, and I honestly believe that once we get out there and take a longer look, I'm not sure the FAA and/or FDOT would think that redoing a parking lot or an apron for $300,000 would be the highest priority. They would look to safety and security to be handled first. And I think what Santi was saying is, we may need to look to redirect that, because the FAA, once we say, we've got a deficient area over here, that that might be a higher priority. If not, that's fine. I think what everyone's just saying is, we actually need to do an assessment just so that we can assure the FAA that, yes, that is the highest priority based on the needs of the facility. But further to the point, with regard to a master plan, an existing master plan right now would be our guidance. I mean, you can't go outside, it's already been approved, unless there's an ALP update and/or a new master plan is done. And what Santi is saying, that as part of that process, if we get to where we're going so fast and furious, yes ma'am, there's an entire process. You select engineering firms every seven years, and you go out on the street, and you select them for a master agreement. And those folks can handle anything outside of what our capabilities are. So that would be a process, once we realize that that is something that's needed. But just a simple safety and security audit of the facility, if you will, to see that that particular project, is that the highest priority based on, there's national priority rating on an aircraft truck, aircraft rescue and firefighting rates about 99 out of 100. Where getting money for T-hangers rates about 65, and money usually runs out about 76. So it's just a no-call assessment, just to make sure that that is aligned with what we're supposed to be wanting, that's fine.
I'll let you add on that. The apron project is a priority for FAA. I've already had to sit down with them. The pavement condition of the apron is completely wrecked. It's diminishing, it's falling apart. It has to be our next project, per FAA.
Let me point out that the current project, we'll call it the project, is just a design project moving forward. It's not a construction project, it's a design project.
Correct. They want, this is already our step. The design is first, and they want us to complete, and they split it between the two years.
Yes.
The construction's going to follow up in the second year.
Yes.
But this is a project that they want us to prioritize now.
Yes. That is, under your current management of that airport, that is a priority project, because you're designating yourself simply as general aviation with no other non-aeronautical revenue coming in. You know, you've got T-hangers, you've got corporate hangers, you know, in that master plan. But we're here to evolve that, which we've been clear about our intent.
Based on what you said, you're saying that this project for this pavement, this apron, is not going to be a priority for your safety.
That's what I'm saying.
You just said safety and security was the number one priority, is the number one priority, if they committed to an audit. And I hear what you're saying. You're saying the FAA has already told you that that's the priority, right? That's what you're saying, correct?
Yes.
Did they do anything else? Did they look at anything else at the airport? Did they take your word in there, or when they came out, that's what they saw?
Yes, they have already looked at our entire project plan, and looked at our PCN, and we just had our updated PCN done. And this apron is the worst condition we have.
No, and I understand that. Did they do a walk-around of the entire airport?
The PCN? Or yes?
Did you see them do a walk-around of the entire airport?
I was out there with them.
Okay, interesting. Is that based on safety certification inspection, the 139 inspector? Was there a safety certification inspector who came out and did, who gave you the evaluation?
This was for the PCN, this was the pavement conditions for the airport. This is based on the projects that we have, this is what they're saying. These are the priorities, and this is what FAA wants us to do. And we've got our five-year plan with FAA already set up based on the pavement conditions for our projects.
What was the PCN, do you remember?
Not off the top of my head.
So, so I guess, the question being asked here is, what FAM is proposing that control would go completely to FAM?
Well, I think what he actually said is that it may not be a priority. So I think he was just making the point that, once they restructure, that may no longer be the top priority. I understand that it is a priority now, I understand what the FAA says. Nobody's refuting that, nobody even cares. He was just simply using it as an example, that once they restructure, the priorities may shift to whatever projects were in the future after that, or so on and so forth. But we're getting off on a tangent on a specific project that doesn't really matter. We should be focusing on the details of the contract.
We still have the old.
That's what I was saying, is, the master plan you were approved, but once it's approved, the decision about what projects get done with that as far as timing, as far as priority, all of those elements could be contributed FAM's decisions.
But they also said it would come back to us for approval.
And would they?
Well, we have the benefit in there, we owe you guys, and annual report of how things are going on.
So I understand that's a report.
But do they have an ability to make a decision on that, or is it simply an correction?
Well, we have our projected master plan. We've given that to you all in this P3 agreement. It's figurative, right? Obviously, we need to go through updating that master plan in respect, and getting FAA approval, and the city will assist us in that approval process.
Well, am I wrong here? If I say that this issue can be resolved in the contract? If it becomes an issue, we could state, well, you have control over future matters around the master plan, but these, enlist them, they're going to, they have to be done first. And we can say that. And if they don't agree, then we'll have a contract, but we can resolve it. I just don't want to spend too much time, because we have some really big issues that still need to be resolved. But, I mean, I agree with what you're saying. But, does that resolve it, or not resolve it?
FAA in the end would have to resolve it, would they not?
They would have to prove.
Right, they would have to approve whether or not we can bypass their plan that they approved for more support needs.
No, it's done all, I'm just stating, that's done all the time. Master plans are updated.
Right.
Generally, you might do a five-year outlook, and then update it three years from that. It's done all the time. So all you're doing is adding new projects as demand changes and needs change, demographics change. So basically, they understand that process. They're not saying you have to stick to that. What they're saying is, it better be drawn up figuratively and progressed in the ALP, if I'm going to fund that capital improvement project.
So what is it that you plan on doing if you took that project out? What would be your project?
It's not necessarily that we would take that project out. We may push it to a.
No, 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 you push it out, but then what would you use to replace for that year?
Well, for instance, Michael might just say things security in the airport. Right now, we're, that airport's got wide open gates. There's no, in other words, there's no restriction of area, those kind of things. We, we have to look at all that. We, we have to make a physical assessment of infrastructure, of buildings, you know, even the AC on buildings. We'll put all this into a reporting process and a capital improvement process. So our five, our five-year funding plan, we'll project that and we'll give you that according to the master plan and a capital improvement program. But it will be updated to what we see as priorities projects and what year and what funding sources will apply.
And so is that something we can have as an exhibit to the contract?
I'm sorry?
Is that something we can have as a exhibit to the contract?
What, what, what are you asking for specifically? I'm sorry.
Yeah, specifically.
Prioritize, what, what, what projects you're gonna prioritize?
Oh, wait.
Are you not gonna do the, the review soon or is that?
No, that, that takes time. That takes, that's a six to nine month process of, of updating that master plan. So we're gonna do an assessment, then move through that master plan update. You'll get that document, you know, we'll, we'll report that to you all.
You don't even have a conceptual one at this point?
Oh, we drew it and we showed you all on the P3. That's conceptual, you know, based on yield, on what, what we could yield out of this airport. So, and what years we intend to, from our business plan, intend to build certain facilities. So, uh, for the P3 agreement, we had, we had to put a diagram together as where we think this needs to go. So as, now, now that you're dealing with the FAA directly on this, as we move forward, there has to be specificity. And so, again, we're gonna have to bring some firms to support us in, in producing this document. And we're, we're gonna go through, whoever you feel if we need to get in a room with you all and do a public process with you all, that's fine too. So, uh, we're not gonna circumvent what the FAA requires for a master plan. I don't know if I could best, is our best answer?
No, I get it. I get it.
Let's move on. Thanks.
Questions, uh, maybe this is a question. On your public share and user page, you noted that any appropriations and funds allocated from outside sources that are invested in the airport, regardless of manner of payment, can only span the capital. What do you mean by that?
So if we're obligated to pay and that fair market value is agreed at 9.2 million, whether we pay that a big one or at the end, it shouldn't matter. But if we go to the federal government, we work out a, a large facility here that brings a brand new laboratory that has nothing to do with us and that costs $9 million to build, that would be something that Avon Park would never have achieved without our assistance. So that should be contributed to what we brought to, that should be contributed to.
I didn't hear that. Someone just asked a question?
I, I guess the, I can understand when you say USDA or others are investing in something, that would count towards payment towards the 9.2 million?
Yes, sir. We feel like it should be. I mean, it's, I mean, at the end of the day, the city's still keeping the real estate, right? So if we go out and, and based on our efforts, we get, whether that's, you know, 9.2 million or 109 improvements out there, that should go towards what we, what we owe overall in the lease.
With that in the federal grants?
Grants, appropriations, new initiatives, infrastructure bills, FEMA mitigation funds. I mean, I would go on all day long. There's so many things out there. But if it was not for the efforts put together before FAM, would it ever actually be realized here at this airport? And so we believe that if, if 9.2 million is what we decide on or the life, life of the lease, no matter where that 9.2 million comes from, which is probably ended up coming all privately anyways, but if we get that in year one on a special program, that should contribute to what we owe the city.
I guess I, let me ask a couple of questions. There's a fundamental misconception here that 9.2 million over the term of the lease. That's not how fair market rent works.
If you have a transaction where you have to move the asset balance to another sheet, that's, is, that should be out of it.
I, I, I mean.
Put mine in place and the capital lease goes. Under normal terms, that would be the best part.
Well, actually, in under normal terms, because in, in essence, with that, that the balance or the transfer of the asset would also have to go to the usual life, which would also attribute another 3% to based on the original terms. So that actual figure of fee will be roughly twelve million. I mean, but again, this is all speculative and so there's no reason for us to put it out because we're all guessing if the FAA is gonna say one way or another, but the way you, as an authority to say.
No, that's really not an answer to the question. That's just a business issue of a net present value of 9.2 million over the years.
That's why I just said 30% depreciation over 30 years. So even if y'all wanted to accelerate that based on general accounting principle, I mean, that's fine, whether that comes up to be. We haven't calculated it to that level because we don't even know if the FAA is gonna agree on that term. So we could, I can make up a thousand different scenarios, the financial model of how that would look like. But until, I go back to, until I can work with Mr. Clary side by side, rolling in the same direction, Mr. Bernard, by the way, David, we love the Capitol and Curse is here. We read a lot of your materials and, I mean, we got, anyways, we're glad you're here. But until that happens and we can go sit in the room with the FAA folks and be like, do you have a problem with this or not? But there, you know, I use this metaphor of like an assignment of benefits with the insured. What, even if I was gonna do mobile media here and you wanted me to negotiate on your behalf based on whether or not the insurance company is paying you the amount appropriate, then the insurance company is not gonna speak to me until I either get A, power of attorney, B, assignment of benefits. So until there is clear action to move forward based on general terms and conditions, we can actually work this out. Meanwhile, we're speculating one thing of what can be done or cannot be done. And then you don't even get closer to a lease, the insurance company needs to read, but the bonding company needs to read on whether or not they, you know, based on that, you know, the draft of rules.
So, I mean, is anyone opposed to getting to that point? I mean, I think it's kind of where we're going, right?
Yeah. I thought that's what we were here for.
You know, we, we should move forward and maybe we should do these in order so we can make sure that we, you know, keep track of it. I know that was, that was up, mentioned.
Yeah, also, I mean, and I'm, I'm here to answer any questions. So if there's any more questions, I was just hoping to go through paragraph by paragraph. There's some language that might be struggling and bringing on. So we can spot there. Okay, my question, do you wanna go brand newer on these items or do you recommend going to the general?
I think, I think we have to defer to the city council on that question, JT. That I think the issue here is, you've responded by providing a, a term sheet. We've, we've kind of bounced around and asked some questions that, that help, I think, identify some of the issues for city council, but I, I don't know that I feel like we're, we've resolved all these issues. I, I, I'm deferring to the city council and especially to Jerry as to, you know, kind of the best, best way to move this forward. I, I mean, I think if we go through every paragraph in the term sheet, uh, I'll, I'll expect that we'll be here until the wee hours in the morning at best. I, I do think that, you know, it, it's been helpful to, to hear your views and I think it, it does give the city council a much better appreciation for how you would propose to manage the airport.
So question, do we have to have every single one of the details worked out before we can ask the FAA the big question?
I don't think so.
When you say you don't think so, it's only after a signed agreement, we can just have a, a term sheet basically?
I, yeah, go back to the five paragraphs that we have here. You know, when we say in here that you endorse this DPP process pending FAA approval. So then we get granular with the FAA, sitting in a room with them saying, okay, how do you feel about this? Who are the subject matter experts on it? Who are the authorities whether or not they can and don't or can't do that? And even if they're nervous about it, all right, we'll take the opportunity then from the local office, state office, all the way to the federal office.
Well, DOT said they wouldn't even talk about it until we got a contract.
Right, that's why I'm thinking this, this right here is sufficient. Because this shows that the intent of the city council was they want to proceed with this, but they need regulatory guidance from.
Yeah, that makes, thanks for the stream of notice. I prefer to get granular and, and either know that all the points that we're, we're gonna agree on tightly because the devil's often, Bernard said, in the details, you know. And so we may think that we have to agree on something, but that needs to be drilled down into quite a bit. So I, I, that would be my preference is we, we either have a full lease the city's willing to live with or we just have term sheets and maybe the FAA will talk to us with that. But, you know, to have a binding, uh, two-page, you know, three-page, uh, statement that I don't agree with.
It's not binding, there's still sort of, we have to get, you know.
It won't, we just take the term sheet and simply say, this is what we talked about, you know, and we haven't gotten down to the details, but here's what we, we, we think is gonna work. We'll work with you and see if they'll talk to us. DOT won't, but then we can always resolve that later. But I, I, you know, I think anything that looks like a, you know, a commitment, you know, is gonna be more of a problem because the only thing that protects us is oral agreements and solid immunity. And when you get things like, you know, three or four page general terms, then you're talking about really having to interpret based on oral statements and I don't like that.
So, you all, go ahead.
So if he goes with what JP is saying, then we, there's a chance that FAA is gonna say, no, go back to the drawing board and get granular and, and be done with it and then let me be right back where we are. So, you know.
Where they also might say, hell no, you're totally left field.
Right, right, but I mean, that's just it.
And then, and then we'll know that maybe we're barking up the wrong tree. I mean, that's kind of what I'm getting at. It just seems like no matter what we're gonna do, it always goes back to what is FAA gonna say, right?
And does the FAA and FDOT, will they ever conflict with one another? I mean, or they be on the same page when it comes to these things or?
I think there's, there's absolutely that potential, but I think for the most part, those firms, if it's, if it's actually written law or codified rules, then the state will have to refer to it because of privacy laws. But, but, um, I mean, I think that's always, you know, gray areas as long as that, that issue.
So the process would be that this would be forwarded to Miguel Martinez, I presume, or someone?
No, no, this would go to Bart Vernace, who's the head of the airport district office in Orlando. Bart is, is Mr. Martinez's supervisor and I've already spoken with him about this. He wants to be personally involved. So he's gonna want us to make a presentation to him and he's gonna want us to demonstrate why we think this is, you know, something that is, is good for the city and is, is compliant with the applicable provisions of federal law, whi- which is why we, you know, wanted to go through, you know, we went through the original term sheet and tried to identify the various issues that, that were raised under the grant assurances, under federal law and under some of the FAA's guidance. So it's, you know, how, how little will they agree to take a look at and give you some indicator? You know, they really prefer to just get pretty, pretty well cooked before they have to spend their time on it because frankly, you know, they don't wanna, they don't wanna waste their time either.
Well, if you say that you've spoken to them already, you know, so what, where are they meeting right now? Are they somewhat favorable? Are they ambiguous? I mean, what's the, the sense? Do they really want some granular response from us or like?
No, that's a, that's a great question. I, I think the, the first thing I'd say is they're concerned because they just heard about this through the grapevine. And so, you know, they, they've seen these kind of ideas that, you know, we're gonna privatize an airport or, you know, lease an airport or, you know, it, it, it happens more frequently than you might think. And often the people that are, are proponent, you know, proponents of that kind of an arrangement are really kind of unaware of the kinds of issues that that raises up. I think, you know, once I was able to speak to him and tell him that the city had engaged outside consultants, that city was, you know, looking at this carefully, he was much, much calmer, but he, you know, you saw the letter from Mr. Martinez. They're gonna be looking at this carefully and they, they wanna be sure that this will meet all their requirements. You know, I, I mean, we can go in with a detailed term sheet. In my experience, often negotiating a detailed term sheet means that then you negotiate a detailed lease and you spend twice as much time because negotiating both documents just takes that much more time. So it's, it, it's something that, you know, we can, we can work with you and with, with the city manager about as to what, what your preferred method of going about it is. But, you know, this is really the city's decision and because you are the, the, the entity with the relationship with FAA, you know, I would recommend that you be sure that whatever is presented to the FAA is something that the city is very comfortable with, rather than let's see, you know, if we throw this against a wall, it'll stick. You know, this is partly about the city's continuing credibility with the FAA as the airport sponsor. And so we wanna be sure that the FAA understands that you're, you're paying attention to all those requirements.
So how long do you think it would take to put together a lease based on the term sheet in regard to our positions?
Um, I've, I've got a rough draft that I'm working through and, uh, you know, I'd wanna work it through with the city council. I would guess that we, two to three weeks before we'd have something that we could submit to FAM.
I can, that sounds to me like the best, best option because that is the drilling down into the details. So, um, that would be my recommendation as we, we get to that point. It doesn't have to be a final, uh, side one. From what I'm hearing you're saying, it just needs to be something that we redline and everybody's basically removed all the red lines by either agreement or whatever at that point.
I think that we're gonna hit about 100,000 impasses because it's always gonna come back to what is the FAA gonna say? I find it extraordinarily hard to believe that there is no open line of communication between FAA or some type of firm consultant that works at the FAA that has the authority to be able to give us some insight into what they will approve and will not approve.
Well, I, I think.
That, that we're stuck in this situation.
Well, with due respect, Mr. Mayor, that's, that's what you've hired me and Lowell to try to do for you is to, to.
But you're apparently unwilling to do that.
Well, we're, what I'm saying is that we can tell you what we, in our experience, what FAA has required and what FAA has approved. You know, we've had a fair amount of experience with, with transactions like this and we've seen where they've run into problems, where they've, where they've been okay. And as, as Jerry said, there are gonna be situations where it's gray. You know, if, if we can make a good argument, often the, the local ADO will, will go along with that as long as, as we have a good reason for it and can show that it will meet the FAA's requirements. But they, they don't like to look at this piecemeal.
Dave, let me make a suggestion, Mayor. I think there's probably about five or six key issues.
Right.
And the, the issue is gonna be if Dave and I talk to them on FAM side in the discussion. So possibly what we could do is have a conversation where Dave and I, whoever you want to participate, have a conversation with them about these big picture issues. And just say, look, you know, we're at a policy level, we want understanding before we spend a ton of time.
That, that is exactly what I want. This, this could've been done months ago. Let's, let's get it done.
I can't guarantee they'll do it.
Okay.
But we can at least have the conversation.
Yes.
Where I'm willing to do the same with D and P.
By all means, God bless you. Set it up.
Yes, yes.
And can they look at the, the documents that was presented to us and you all go through these as well?
No, no, it, it is these.
Okay, okay, I, okay.
Let me just, if I could, I'll hit, I'll hit the six, okay? Number one is the capital restructuring.
Right.
Is gonna have to be discussed with them and understand how they're gonna handle that. Or if they have a privatization approach, is that something we can work around them to kind of restructure? What's that go over like, okay? Number two is things we've already talked about. What is the city council gonna have to sign off on? Okay, for FAA to be comfortable, we talked about the master plan, we talked about rents, those are clear. Are there any other things that FAA is gonna require the city to sign off on as part of this lease? Okay, tell us. What are those? What they're gonna be others? Number three is really getting into taking other, it's kind of the fair market value and what we get reinvested and that kind of big picture element. Uh, because they're talking about taking third-party money and even federal grants and carry that towards the fair market value investment that FAM would be making and that mental policy question for FAA. Uh, that they'll need to provide. So I think those, those three to me are important. The insurance is probably our first whole issue to one.
They probably have some insight into what those dollar figures they were looking for, right?
So, um, and, you know, rents and, and that kind of stuff, you know, building privatization, that'll all be part of those conversations. And we're not gonna go in and tell them, you know, we want to do that, we're gonna say the same.
Yeah, as long as we're working together on it because I feel like the message that we try to convey to the FAA has, has, this has been a very.
Well, I, I got your position, okay? So we're gonna present your position. Does that make sense?
I mean, I mean, even today, this ordination of funds thing that was confusing, right, earlier, could've been handled over a phone call. I didn't, I don't know if we had to come in this big, you know, public setting to, to do that. And so if you have questions about, man, my phone is open 24/7.
I understand.
David, my phone is open 24/7. I don't know, you know, the city has entrusted y'all to, to counsel on their behalf. We don't have to do it all, you know, as long as we're working in concert together, that's all right.
JP, you got to make them.
Sit in the microphone, please.
Um, I think, I, I understand what you're saying in terms of fair market value. Uh, what we're talking about is any projects that we capitalize at the airport. It may come from grant funding of certain kinds. It may come from private funding. We stated that very clearly in the general conditions. Uh, uh, that would be considered a capital project that would be put up against our long-term lease. You know, so that's all we're saying because you, because the asset, because the asset, whether it was paid for.
I understand.
Okay, right. So you're, you're, again, it goes back to representation of, of what we're saying. Uh, you, you're bringing up, I, I guess the general concern, can grant money be used to fund projects? And will that count as a capital project?
I'm not bringing up concerns at all.
Okay. No, no, it's okay for you to bring up. I'm not saying that's bad. I'm just saying, I want, I want you to understand. All we're saying is that when we capitalize a project out of the airport, whether it be infrastructure, whether it be a building. Uh, one-way paving, every, that is considered an asset. And that asset will ultimately go back. So that's it. So that's all we're saying, you know, and so I just want to make that point clear.
Okay.
Thank you.
So in, in this meeting that we're hopefully going to get with the, someone from the FAA. You said that, uh, someone from FAM will be present as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And who, who's that going to be?
Can we call the public?
No, I, well, I'm not going to have a.
We're not going to have that.
So you need to, you need a limit, you need a limit, you know. Otherwise, I've done a lot of government meetings and I've done before.
Is it probably going to be a, like a Zoom meeting or a phone call or?
Um, I would suggest. Um, I don't know, Dave, what, what your thought on that is, but, uh.
Can I interrupt just real quick? I, I know you're trying to pick a one person or two people. There's multiple facets to this project. And to be fair, I mean, I wouldn't have a problem with three or four of them being on that call. I mean, everybody just raises a little hand when you're on Zoom. Because as we could see tonight, expertise is in different areas for them and there's not just one point person. There's a multitude of them.
I agree.
And, you know, in all fairness, I, I, I certainly would expect that they would be able to partake in that. I'm not saying fifteen people, you know, but. To keep it concise, just let them know who's going to be there ahead of time if it's three or four of them. I mean, they've made a commitment this far. I know some of you flying from Timbuktu to get here to do these things. And I mean, I, it's, I think it's fair.
Thank you.
We can agree.
I'm just saying.
All right. So on that note, uh, obviously that is the million dollar question. I asked the question I've had this entire time. I don't think that we can really do much of anything unless we know what the FAA is going to approve or not.
Right. I really thought.
I really feel like all these small details can be worked out.
Because when I read this, this document in the, in the package tonight, what the majority of it said was FAA, Institute, and everybody else is going to approve.
Right.
So. Those are the big picture. I, I just don't know, Mr. Clary, you know, it seems to me that there's a, a, a fatal flaw to this contract. And it's the perception of the lease that you cannot mortgage city property. That's where I am just hung up on that. And if that is the big question, if the FAA, if the FAA can answer just that one question or the insurance question. Then that will facilitate moving forward. Otherwise, we just.
Is it going to be legal to have this quote unquote capital lease or not?
Right.
That is the purpose of it all.
I mean, isn't that really it? Right.
Yeah, that's a big portion of it. We win. We might be, like, if the city attorney wants to go through it and be granular. I feel like more things are going to come up that we're going to say, what is the FAA? So it would be better for us to be in there and go granular with the, the FAA.
If they want to do that, I mean, these guys.
I think that's what I think would work best.
Yeah, but if they don't do that, then we're right back here at another special meeting and someone bring a copy.
We could have had several meetings with them already, but again, it goes back to, does the city allow as the owner of that public asset, us to speak to the FAA? Right? And so now we, I mean, we have gatekeepers, which is fine, but I want to work with those gatekeepers. Or can the city make some sort of motion that it's okay for us to contact?
Well, I think we need to.
I would, uh, I would urge the city not to let FAM speak, um, to the FAA without FAM's advisors being present.
The city's advisors. Yeah, I agree. I mean, I.
It's a joint, it's got to be a joint meeting. Uh, I, yeah, no doubt. And, uh, I appreciate that, Dave. And so, um, so we're talking now about going back to the lease. And I really believe that that, that is the best option simply because there's so many details associated with this. You start getting into a detail that we haven't discussed and it ends up just like the subordination issue. You know, we thought we, you did, we, we knew what you were talking about. You thought we, you knew what we were talking about, but we didn't.
Okay, so.
So let's get down to the details and, and then, then we'll know.
Let me ask you this. Has there been a phone conference meeting between our two advisors and, and FAM?
Uh, since there have been several, but not, not on this particular topic.
I mean, what, what, when's the last one? Let me ask you that.
Six weeks till fire together.
Okay. So it's been a little while. So don't you think that perhaps a meeting between FAM and Mr. Clary and Mr. David? On the phone would be beneficial pre-game to this FAA meeting?
I, I, I think it would be more helpful once he, uh, David's got the lease in a draft form. And they get an opportunity to look it over, then talk about it at that point. But I think we talk about it now, we're just going to go to the same thing we're doing right now.
Yeah, they're going to have two hour meetings and they're not going to.
It's going to be crazy long for no purpose.
Are you saying that you want to wait the two or three weeks and then have counsel go through everything and then have them meet? Is that what you're saying?
No. Yes?
Well, he's, he says it's going to take two, three weeks to do the, to the draft agreement.
What about, what Jared, what about the FAA? Wouldn't we be right back where we started from? Wouldn't, don't we need to know what FAA and DOT and everybody else?
But there's two ways to look at that, uh, frankly. On the one hand, yeah, we can go there now and some of these big deal issues, we can talk about it, okay? And, and maybe resolve or not resolve, at least we can understand where they're at with it. But there, there probably, there are dozens that we haven't discussed yet.
Well, but then we'll cross that bridge when we get there. Why don't we just get through the major humps? For right now, the five points that he's talking about and at least get the FAA involved that way. I mean, I don't know if that's FAA protocol or not, but I mean, it's just a.
It's your choice.
The FAA does not like to make policy for the city. The FAA, you know, we can ask them some specific questions and if that's your direction, Lowell and I will, will work with FAM to do that. Um, but, but what I really want to emphasize is the FAA will continually say that this is the city's decisions, the city's deal to make. The city makes the policy and the FAA is going to look at it to make sure that it doesn't violate their federal requirements. What we've tried to point out are some of the hot button items that are going to get the FAA really upset. There are a lot of other issues that are really going to be important to the city, some of which are going to be important to FAA and some of which are not. Um, so don't, I, I, I just want to be clear that, you know, we can't expect the FAA to come in and say, yeah, you know, you could do this, you can't do that. You can do something else. Um, they, they're, they're not going to take that position and they will, they will be unhappy if we ask them to try to do that.
Well, how about, can we just do a parallel course then? You've already authorized, uh, David to do the, um, uh, the lease and work on the lease, which he's been doing. Um, and same time, try and set up a meeting with FAA with the, the major issues that you're talking about. And then, and then it may be that they won't even meet with us for six weeks, you know, which case we might be right, point of having a, a contract to present.
Well, whatever response they give, give it to the council. I want to see.
I, I have one comment if I may. I, I thought it was our job to hire the attorney and the consultant, do all this work for us. I thought this should have been done, prepared already with all the major issues figured out between FAM and our representatives of the city. And then brought back to us to what they agreed or disagreed. I think we've been spinning our wheels here for a couple of weeks now. And I think you guys need to get on your toes and start doing something what we're paying you for. I mean, I just think you should have a lot more in this done than a bunch of questions that you've given to them and us to bring up all out of order. We don't even know what page you're looking at when you bring up these questions. And then then some, several people try to answer them. I think all this should have been done by both of you by now, because that's what we paid you to do. And then bring it forward to us. So we, that means thank the FAA. Then we know where exactly where we're going. That's what we're paying you to do is explain to us what kind of conferences you got together. And what kind of agreement you got and what may be a stopping point. I thought all those stopping points should have been done by now. That's my point of view. Thank you.
I agree with you and to take it one step further, if I have to hear one more time. That one of our experts or FAM did not have a communication or couldn't work out something before they got to this meeting that was. Plenty of time scheduled ahead of time, uh, you know, I'm going to be pretty pissed off. Okay? So pick up your phone and talk to each other, get some communication and take care of these things before we get here. Okay?
But, uh, all I got to say is negotiation has to be in sunshine.
I'm not talking about negotiation.
But you're talking about negotiation. We're talking about resolving issues in the contract.
Okay, well, I'll give you a perfect example, Jerry. Mr. Uh, David did not understand what they were talking about with subordinate funds. That is a prime example of picking up the phone for thirty seconds would have solved that entire question. Everybody would be on the same page. Instead of an inference and an inference and having to work that out, that should never have happened. It, it's embarrassing to our entire establishment that we even had to say something like that.
I think it works both ways. They didn't understand what we were saying about it.
Really, Jerry?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right. Is there any question as to the guidelines of what the council is looking for from anyone in this room?
Sweet. Yeah. Thank you, council, for seeing us again today. I'll be super pumped to work with both Clary and David on this to get this all resolved.
Awesome. Anything else for the good of the city? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Not adjourned, please.
David, could you give me a call, please?
Steven, opposition, we are adjourned.
Yes.
Eight one three six one zero eight one zero eight.
Can you do that one more time?
Eight one three six one zero eight one zero eight.
Got it.
Thanks.
Thanks.